I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Our first item is a public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the city council. Each person providing public comment will have three minutes to speak. I have, if you're still filling out forms, that's fine. I have Lori Steele.
Hi.
Come forward.
It'd be kind of cool if we start bringing microphones out to people.
Ladies and gentlemen of the court, hi, I'm Lori Steele. I live in the Green Ridge community and I'm here on number 8A. This is an appeal of extending Barkway. It's a road that would be developed adjacent to our community. I've been working and talking with the developer. We're appealing it today as our understanding is that it would create more traffic to an already intense traffic scenario and situation for our community. I brought my young son, he's two and a half. Many kiddos in this area is already a very busy cut through at primarily rush hour times of day. There are stop signs that are just totally avoided and like they're not there. So it's a big concern. It's right next door, a community park, and it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when somebody's going to be hurt. So additional development to our streets is very concerning. So in speaking with the developer, they've promised, it's not completely in writing yet, but they have been telling our citizens, our community in different capacities, that they are going to propose and build a park for all of abilities. So that is what we're here to talk about today and just to get on the record that we would love to explore other options. We've been told in the past that speed bumps and other traffic deterriers, deterrents are not possible. So I'd like to just get that documented, that start that conversation somehow, that that is something we're interested in doing to protect our kiddos in our, our community. And I think I covered everything.
All right. Ma'am, if, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome.
My name is Kathy and I too live in Green Ridge and I've been there for 22 years. And I did read the email from Doug Weiss today. This sort of appeared that he didn't know a lot about what we were talking about, although we have been working with the developers as a community and been meetings with them. So why is it like the planning department, working with the developer? Why am I even having to stand here whenever it seems to me that between the developer, the council, and other departments should be figuring this out? Not Lori trying to stand up here to speak because of fear for her child or me that our neighborhood isn't being protected and safe? Again, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Mayor, why am I here whenever you should be working with the developers to come up with the right answers? I don't know what all your positions are. I don't know what all their positions are. Can I please ask that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you an answer. This is on the agenda, so it's not a item of not being able to discuss it, but quite often, and as a matter of fact, on a regular basis, the, the planning department and the development department are involved in any of that planning process. They even go through the planning and zoning process. And then this afternoon or this evening, we'll be having that discussion with the developer.
Then I appreciate that because we feel like we're in the middle.
Sure.
People who know a whole lot more than I know, developers know much more, more than what I know, but we are still concerned for our community.
And we'd like to hear from you.
May I also speak? Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I, obviously you feel like you're in the middle. I feel like I'm in the middle a little bit as well. What I can tell you, I do know is that this developer has paid a fee in lieu instead of, or offered to pay a fee in lieu instead of developing park on that land. So I don't know why he's talking to one group about building a park when he's already said he's not going to build a park to us. So that, that's a little bit concerning. I can also tell you that the city already has the funding and is working through the plan to build an all abilities park. I'm not sure where that's going to be, but we have already established that as a goal of this council. So that park will be coming and I'm very excited about that park. Again, it seems like perhaps this developer is trying to, to play you and I off of each other and we don't really enjoy that with our development community. We'd certainly want to have a much more respectful relationship with our developers.
So, so we do appreciate you, we, we appreciate you bringing up the questions. As the mayor laid out, the process, this is part of the process with that. You'll see a much more robust conversation as, as 8A comes around and I think that may be able to help illuminate a lot of your questions.
Yes, yes, that's what we're asking, better participation between the two so that young mothers don't have to come up here and worry.
Yes, ma'am.
What we're trying to have a neighborhood.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I have two other individuals, Michael Lang and Jessica, I'm not even going to try to pronounce her last name, Mitch Nick, Mitch Nick, if that's close, not wishing to speak. And well, Michael is opposed to 8A. I don't have, I think there's some concern by Jessica on the development as well. So, so that item will be coming up later for a little further discussion. Is there any else, buddy else here wishing to speak? I think those were the only three I got this evening. This is your chance. Okay, thank you. All right. Presentations, I had three proclamations, I believe. You have such a full house, I would have thought somebody else wanted to speak. So this evening, our first proclamation is the declaring August 2025 as emergency management and awareness month in the city of Flugerville. The state of Texas historically leads the nation in the number of federally declared disasters. Emergency managers are responsible for establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to support emergency response and recovery efforts in their communities. They assist communities in the region to prepare, recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of continuing threats, emergencies, and disasters. I proclaim August 2025 as emergency management and awareness, awareness month in the city of Flugerville. And this evening, we have Joseph Chacon, Director of Emergency Services, here to accept that proclamation.
Someone needs to shave, but that's okay.
Hey, hey, I shaved this morning.
Are you facial hair shaving?
You, you look like you haven't had to do that. It's gotten bad now.
And until not too long ago, I didn't realize by the state of Texas, I am designated as the emergency management director for the city of Flugerville, among other things, which I later learned about. The next proclamation is proclaiming August 2025 as gun safety awareness month in the city of Flugerville. Unsecured guns pose clear safety risks, particularly to children. In the United States, 350 children a year, a year get access to a loaded firearm and accidentally shoot themselves or someone else. In 2022, firearm-related injuries were among the five leading causes of death for people ages one to 44 in the United States. Educating and providing resources to communities on how to practice safe gun handling and storage is a proven way to create safer homes and neighborhoods. Therefore, proclaim August 2025 as gun safety awareness month in the city of Flugerville. And this evening, we have Kim Caldwell with Lock Arms for Life to accept the proclamation.
Can I, can I say a few words real quick?
Yes, please. That's my one.
First of all, thank y'all so much for, thank y'all for being here too. How we show up and participate in our communities is, right, that's what makes communities. There are some other folks here who are part of this today. I'd like to thank Captain Trevor Stokes, who set this into action for us and has been such an incredible advocate for us. We have Lance Ross here, who is, is the son of the founder of our organization, Lock Arms for Life. We have La Portia Malloy, whose name I got wrong last week, but got right today, who is actually doing the work to intervene in hospitals when someone comes in with an injury to make sure that it doesn't turn into a back and forth brawl. So our mission is very simple at Lock Arms for Life, every gun locked when not in use. I know we quoted 2022, in Texas, firearm injuries are the leading cause of death for kids and it doesn't have to be that way. And so what we've done, and I have some here tonight, I see a kid, I hand him a book. My daughter is here, she has a piece of art featured in the book. And really what this is, is it is, it is a resource to show kids, what does it look like to be safe? Safety looks like stop, don't touch, walk away, get in a don't. But what we know is that we learn things more effectively in the course of a story and so we have a series of stories in here. Through our grant from the Austin Travis County Office of Violence Prevention, we're able to make these books available across Travis County. And so our hope is, if, if, if I, if y'all up here have young folks in your life, I have a few more in my bag, please, do not assume that the young people in your life know what it means to be safe. We have this tool available in English and in Spanish. I have some here, it's available online as well. And you can order a free gun lock that have, that we will ship to your home from lockarmsforlife.org. Please, 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 we can, we can make a huge difference together. Thank you.
Thank you.
The frames look, the frames look so good. Look at that, that looks gorgeous. Did you get, what's his name? His proclamation?
And last but not least, the Abundant Life Community Development Corporation is a nonprofit organization committed to enhancing well-being of Flugerville residents. The Good Life Holistic Wellness Program represents an innovative, people-centered approach to healing and resilience. The Good Life program is strong, is a strong example of community-level innovation, delivering wellness and mental health solutions. I proclaim August 9th as Good Life Holistic Wellness Day in the city of Flugerville. And is there somebody here to receive that? Okay, come forward.
I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to speak because we believe that the programs that we provide, it helps families that are going through mental health, those that may be homeless, those who may need care. And so to acknowledge Abundant Life Community Development Corporation, I believe that we're going to make an impact, not only here, but also in your families, around the community. And I believe that you're going to see that we're going to be changed. And so I'm so proud to be with the abundant life because I know for certain, I know for certain, our family's going to be healed, our community is going to be healed, and I believe that we can do this together. So when you walk by somebody who is, you may not know who they are, just say, how are you doing? And how are you doing through it? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
They're running a page there, so. No. Because they look really nice now. I got like a little. I was even talking about the print. That's the funniest one. Yeah. That's cute.
Just for the record, I have another citizen, Rodolfo Ibarra, who is wishing to oppose item 8A. He doesn't wish to speak, but just wants to, for the record, known that he is in opposition to item 8A. Okay. And now, Trista, go ahead and read the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull 5L.
Nobody heard you.
5L?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers? No? Oh, wonderful. Okay. Proud of you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Okay, item 5L has been pulled from the consent agenda. 5A, approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville approving the 2025 annual service and assessment plan update and 2025 assessment role for the Martin Track Public Improvement District in accordance with chapter 372, Texas Local Government Code as amended marking various findings and provisions related to the subject and providing for an effective date. 5B, approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, granting to Sci Energy LP, a franchise to furnish and supply gas to the general public in the city of Flugerville, Travis County, Texas, and to transport, deliver, sell, and distribute gas in and out of and through said municipality for all purposes, providing for the payment of a fee or charge for the use of the streets, alleys, and public ways, providing a severability clause, a penalty clause, and an effective date. 5C, approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, granting to Universal Natural Gas LLC, DBA Universal Natural Gas, Inc., a franchise to furnish and supply gas to the general public in the city of Flugerville, Travis County, Texas, and to transport, deliver, sell, and distribute gas in and out of and through said municipality for all purposes, providing for the payment of a fee or charge for the use of the streets, alleys, and public ways, and providing a severability clause, a penalty clause, and an effective date. 5D, approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, granting the use of city property by easement totaling approximately 0.313 acres, 13,654 square foot of land out of the East Kirkland Survey Number 7 in Travis County, Texas, being a portion of said 34.728 acre tract of land described in warranty deed to the city of Flugerville, Texas, recorded in document number 2003032161 of the Real Property Records of Travis County, Texas, providing cumulative repealer and severability clause, providing for open meeting and establishing an effective date. Again, item 5L has been pulled from the consent agenda. All remaining items to be acted upon in a single motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, third, fourth. Okay, motion carried on the consent agenda. We'll come back to the item that was pulled later in the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I'm going to take a little deviation in our agenda. We didn't finish a couple of items during work session and because there are representatives here, I don't want them to wait till midnight. You won't have to wait till midnight, but I don't want them to have to wait late in the meeting to come back. So at this point, let's do one that I think we can finish real quick. It's 2D, well, let's see, whatever it is, 8H, executive session, is that the executive, executive session item, consultation with the council regarding 15508 Impact Way LLC versus Flugerville Community Development Corporation in the city of Flugerville pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. We are in executive session. We will return shortly.
consideration regarding making appointments to the Flureville Development Corporation. We have applicants received. I don't know if they're all here. I will call them out if you'll raise your hand. Michael Davis. Okay. Kim Hunsinger. Not here. Okay. Said Kazmi. Okay. And then there are two others that would not be in unless they're in attendance not Peter Castillo and Jacqueline Tealer. Nope. Okay. Well, let's start with this is to replace a vacancy that recently became open due to the ineligible eligibility of the the ineligibility of the incumbent at the time. So, Trista, what are the specifics on this? Is this is for an unexpired term?
Correct. This is an unexpired term that is expiring at the end of this year.
End of this year. Okay.
This is four meetings.
So, four meetings.
There we go. All right, so. Yep. Mr. Davis? Present your case. Now, I didn't mean it like that.
It's all good. It feels that way. So, good evening, council. I don't have much to say, other than I'm interested in being a more active citizen in the community. I attended the last PF 101 cohort, and just looking for a way to help out, learn more, and kind of give back to the community.
Okay.
That's it.
Are you familiar with where the PCDC is today in terms of some of their developments, or what some of their achievements have been?
See, here's the memory thing. So, I was looking at it. I feel like it was, I know future things to look at are the Project Greenfield.
Right.
Seeing what can go there. I believe it was Pepsi was brought in, maybe, or they're a partner.
Correct.
And, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
What's your, what's your professional background?
Professional in computers, computer security.
Why PCDC?
Just sounded interesting, just to see how we're trying to bring in that, I guess, talent, those positions, the opportunities for Flugerville. I'd like to see Flugerville develop more, and instead of being kind of that bedroom-ish community, have more, be more of a destination. A lot of people I know don't come to Flugerville. They're going elsewhere for things. It would be nice if we could attract some businesses that would bring more money into Flugerville.
So, you've been in Flugerville eight years. Where did you live before?
Before, I lived up in Maryland.
Oh, in Maryland, okay. Have you lived in a community this size?
This size? Yep. I think so. I was more right outside of Washington DC and Baltimore.
Where exactly?
Glen Burne, outside of Baltimore, and then Silver Spring, outside of DC.
Okay. We should have more difficult questions for you.
This is good.
Glen Burne, isn't that officially where the airport's located?
Uh, it's.
Just next to it.
Yes, next to it. But they flew over my house all the time.
I imagine so.
Yeah.
Yes, I, yeah, I spent some time working for a company in Glen Burne.
Well, I appreciate your participation in PF 101. That's been kind of a really good vehicle for us in terms of recruiting candidates to build a lot of the boards and commissions that are coming up at the end of the, end of the year. So, I applaud you for that. All right. No other questions? All right, that was pretty easy.
Thank you.
So, Kim Hunsinger is not here. Said Kazmi? Please tell me I got close on your name.
Said.
Said, okay. All right.
So, I was actually going for the zoning.
Oh, planning and zoning?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Board of Adjustments.
Okay, so this is the wrong board then?
They asked me for both. I, PCDC was the first one, and then they mentioned.
Oh, okay.
Um, which, which agenda item are we on? We're on 6A?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion for him on 6B, so.
On 6B? Okay.
Do you have an interest in PCDC, or are you mainly interested in the, the other board?
I'm just trying to volunteer just to be part of the city.
Oh, cool.
So.
What's, what's your professional background?
I'm a project manager for IT company.
Okay. Um, can you say which IT company?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, we have some IT folks, huh? Well, you wouldn't know whether there's a security issue at PCDC.
Well, that would be his job, right? Cybersecurity guy.
When you say you want to see the cities thrive socially, what do you mean?
I didn't say that. I said I want to volunteer, but yeah, to your point, yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, you said that.
No, you said that in your application.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. I just thought you meant it right now. I was like. No, okay, so I'm coming from, I lived in New York City. I lived in Houston, North Carolina. So, coming to a small town like Flugerville, you know, there's a lot of things we can be doing that we are not doing. Bringing people together, having events. I mean, if you look at Hutto, they were a small city a couple of years back. Now they're booming. What's the reason they're growing, and Flugerville's not up to par with them? You know, we have a lot more to offer, so that's what I'm talking about.
Why do you say Flugerville's not up to par with Hutto?
Have you seen what they're doing?
I'm asking you.
No, okay, so the baseball.
You are.
No, okay, yeah. The baseball stadiums, the Kalahari, the shopping centers and everything, right? So, they're pulling something over there.
Kalahari's and Round Rock.
Yeah, so it's a big.
Well, it's 79, yes.
And the baseball stadiums and Round Rock.
It's on 79, so understanding what, okay, so when people look at it, they think it's Hutto. So, what I'm saying is that Flugerville has more to offer. I mean, I live here and I, for the past seven, eight years, you know, it's slowly growing. Things going in the right direction. But coming from bigger cities, I think we can make a bigger impact and just grow.
What's an example of something that you think can adapt? I mean, and, and it's interesting, because it's always a juxtaposition, right? You say bigger city, I'm from a bigger city, but as Flugerville is compared, do you know what the median size of a Texas city is?
No.
Four thousand people. So, we have, we have, we have, we have 1,220, 1,221 cities and municipalities in the state of Texas. So, by definition, by proportionality, given that we have about 82,000 to 85,000 people in the, the rate in the city itself, about another 35,000, 40,000, you have about 140,000, 150,000 people in the Flugerville area. So, the question isn't necessarily, then it's, that's why I was intrigued to hear what your thoughts were, and you made the juxtaposition to Hutto, you know, regarding that. But then the things that you've referenced to Hutto were actually in Round Rock. What is it exactly that you're seeing that you think they can adapt here? You heard from our city manager regarding the programs, the parks, and some of the other themes, and the things that go from there as well. You heard about the different concerts. You've heard about the actual different events that take place at Lake Flugerville, and other things that go from there as well. What exactly, what particular, what, what particular do you have in mind that you think that, hey, this can be adaptable to Flugerville that I've, I've actually experienced utilizing other cities?
So, Lake Flugerville is a good example, right? So, the events we're having over there, we should have more of them. Marathons, like have mini marathons kind of a deal. Attract more.
How many marathons do you think should be out there?
Been there to one. I mean, there was a small.
No, no, no. How many do you think should be out there?
Not just at the Lake Flugerville. I'm just talking about in general. So, you got to figure out the logistics of it, right? So, not just the Lake Flugerville. You might have it just on Wise Lane, going towards Lake Flugerville, then come down to Kellin, or whatever it is. You have to plan it out. So, attract more people. Put Flugerville, you know, like, I want to, like, I've been here for the past eight years, and I want to be here for the next 10, 15 years more. So, while I'm here, I want to see this city grow, have my kids enjoy the city. That's what I mean.
Are your kids currently enjoying the city?
So far, they are.
How old are they?
Objection, argumentative, counsel.
I don't mind, but there's, my son is six years old, and my girls are 10 and 11.
Okay. So, we want more things that they can enjoy as teenagers, and then.
I don't want to drive to Austin every single time, yes.
Right, and no doubt, as the trail capital of Texas, I think it makes a lot of sense to have more of those, you know, half marathons, full marathons, triathlons. And that, that sounds like what you're arguing for there. Hey, capitalize on, on what we're capitalizing on, right? Um, no, I, I really appreciate that. What, what do you think your project management background is going to do to enhance your ability to serve the community?
So, I deal with a lot of cross-functioning team. So, being able to pull people together, get ideas, get all the, you know, do the risk analysis, and the budgeting, resources, managing resources, that's gonna come in handy.
But part of your role specifically is that you be in oversight and actually policy method, not actually day-to-day operations.
You asked me what my role was, as a project manager, what can I bring to the.
No, 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 the adaptability of that, but in an instance like this.
Do, do you have experience with governance oversight and policymaking?
Governance in IT, yes. City level, no.
One of the things you said on your application is, I believe that professional level disagreement is essential.
Yes.
Shows that everyone is committed to improving conditions, rather than just going with the flow. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, so if, like, we were going back and forth, right? So, he doesn't have to agree with me. He needs to show me respect, and I need to show him respect. So, we can have a difference in opinion, learn from it, take the good from both, and move forward with it. So, when people are just nodding their head and just agreeing with everything, that's something I don't agree with in my role. So, if I have like a team of developers, and they're just agreeing to just everything that I throw at them, it's like, you're not thinking. I'm doing all the thinking for you, and you're just going along with it. So, that's what I'm looking at.
And to be full disclosure, David, that's the first thing I read about his application. That's why I was scrolling them on.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else? Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. So, the other four applicants are not present. So, ergo, we only have Michael Davis and Said Kazmi this evening. Now, council, we don't have to make a decision this evening if you choose not to, since we only have two candidates. And, well, I'll just leave it at that.
I mean, I think that.
Do we know?
Go ahead.
Do we know the reason why they weren't able to attend, and if they can attend in a future meeting?
Uh, yes, I know that one was out of town, one got called away for an office travel unexpectedly. The other, I'm unsure of.
I did find it interesting that Mr. Hunziker has attended a meeting in the past. I think he was the only one who marked that.
Yep.
But in, in my opinion, we've got, we've got four months. I know when we've had a vacancy, temporary or a short-term vacancy over there, we've appointed someone from the council to fill in for the time being, in a capacity where they did not intend to continue after the end of the year, giving us the opportunity to go through the regular interview cycle, and, you know, find candidates, you know, through a normal process when we may have more applicants.
Yep.
Are you advocating for yourself?
I am not up for that this, this time. But I am curious if there are other council members who would be willing to step in and step up, and fill in temporarily to keep things moving forward in the interim, and step away when we end up with, with a greater pool of applicants during our normal time.
Or we could appoint a staff member as well.
We could.
I have an excellent candidate. Right there. Are we talking about Breonna, the manager?
Well, I know. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested. It's four meetings.
Okay.
Your third Wednesdays are free, or whatever it is?
Oh, they're gonna be now.
All right. I make a motion. We appoint Mr. Mateer in the interim period to the PCDC board.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. This process continues again in December, and so please feel free to come back again at that time for reconsideration.
I would very much encourage you to do so.
Or you can stay through Board of Adjustment if you want to do that.
Yeah, and if you don't leave right now, we're gonna stick you on Board of Adjustment.
Okay, our next item is.
It'd also be a good opportunity for them to attend one of the PCDC meetings.
6B, Discuss and Consider Action Making Appointments to the Board of Adjustment. Okay, so would any of you wish to be considered to the Board of Adjustment? Oh. Michael, Michael Davis has indicated that he would be interested. And by the way, the Board of Adjustment is the, the one board that has higher authority over the city council than any other board in the city. Ask Mr. Rogers. He is the dean of the Board of Adjustment. Michael Davis, I think, indicated that.
Michael, what about Said?
Said, would you be a fit in that board?
He said yes.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd move to appoint both Michael and Said to the Board of Adjustment.
Second, it gets him into the city. I'm gonna enjoy Said on that board.
He will, he will be a welcome fit.
All right, motion carried. Welcome to the Board of Adjustment. It's so much fun. I was on there for most of the decade. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item, we're moving back to the, excuse me, the. The legislative item. From earlier, what item was that?
8G.
8G.
Are we supposed to do seven?
Trista, you have the caption on that. 8G.
Absolutely. I do. 8G.
Oh, I get it. I got it. I got it. Discussion regarding the 89th Texas Legislative Session or Legislative Agenda Priorities.
Seven is the supplemental agenda about calling an election.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Breonna Miller, Special Projects Manager for the City of Flugerville City Manager's Office. And tonight, we have a legislative update and a discussion on legislative priorities, a high overview agenda. We'll talk about the 89th Regular Session, the 89th First Special Session, our current legislative agenda, and then future priorities. At a higher review, and before I dive in, tonight with us, we also have Eddie Solis with Hillco Partners. I'll, I'll start off with some items where city priority bills in this 89th Regular Session included earning the designation of the Trail Capital of Texas, which advanced and passed. So, we are officially the Trail Capital of Texas. We all knew that. Now, just the state knows it too. And then some other items that we had that we were seeking introduction in Passage Four included, to have the city eligible for a qualified hotel project. And we did see two bills introduced, SB 1071 and HB 39. Apologies, that four should not be there. And then the text dot toll revenue discussion related to text out requiring the city to pay for potential lost toll revenue. And that was introduced SB 848. I'm gonna introduce Eddie Solis to give you an update on what those two bills look like.
Hey, Eddie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. It's a pleasure to be here. Eddie Solis with Hillco Partners. We had the privilege of, of representing the city during the legislative session. It was a very spirited one. A lot happening during the regular session, of course. Since then, I wanted to thank, of course, the mayor, and Spree Lynn, and, and the Legislative Committee for all their coordination, and Brianna for keeping us coordinated throughout the session. To speak of these two bills straight away, and go into any part of the legislative session that you all would like. The Qualified Hotel Project Bill was, moving forward as a, as a standalone bill, we had a lot of conversation. We always have a lot that we keep an eye on as one bill is going forward, or moving, or being, after being introduced. Nothing really works in a vacuum. There was typically a process that, that fell in routine as these hotel bills are introduced. They are introduced as a standalone, then they go forward typically in the House, and are put into an omnibus bill, and that's what you see in House Bill 2974, and I'll get back to that. Thank you for the preparation of the standalone bill as we were showing and voicing the, the value of the Qualified Hotel Project Bill for Flugerville, as others did on the same day. Throughout the process, early on, we were even seeing some concerns in, in the scope of some of these projects. If you remember, there was a component of our bill that similar in other legislation as well. Typically, there is a, if you all know the Qualified Hotel Project, it is the, the authority from the legislature to retain rebated state revenue in order to, for 10 years, provide the, the debt service on a project. Typically, it'll have that impacted by the, the project itself, as well as a thousand-foot radius. Typically, it'll have that impacted by the, the project itself as well as a thousand-foot radius. If you all remember, that thousand-foot radius was advised to us to be deleted from our bill, as every other bill that had the same. So we started identifying, that hadn't ever happened before in my experience. So we started identifying, uh, some level of thoughtful concern as to what some of these projects are doing to some of these communities or, or the state. As you all know, there is a fiscal impact that is put together by the Comptroller on each one of these bills, and they establish a revenue that A is not realized by the state yet, but would not be realized, uh, when these projects come online and are refunded, these, um, these, uh, the, the sales tax revenue. So as twenty-nine seventy-four put together all the other standalone bills, including ours, it also took on, when it went back to the Senate, a bill that was not favorable to many communities. Uh, we were involved with that along with others. Uh, that bill, uh, as I mentioned, was a standalone bill in the Senate that did not have much movement in the House. Uh, the Senate added it to twenty-nine seventy-four. And as we heard a little bit ago, uh, there was a, a, a professional disagreement, a legislative disagreement between the House author and the Senate author. And basically, that's where we got hung up. And it was a standstill. Um, the Senate did not want to acquiesce. The member whose bill was twenty-nine seventy-four, uh, felt confident that A, the amendment was not germane to, to that bill, and did not like that bill, or rather, that language being added to his bill. Uh, he, as we understand it, had a direct conversation with the senators who were in favor of that. We'll recall that the Senate, uh, collectively put word out that they were in favor of that language being kept in that bill, and it became a spirited but a very respectful, uh, discussion. Uh, but no one, no one was, was, um, going to acquiesce. So unfortunately, twenty-nine seventy-four, uh, did not make it through the, the legislative session. There was discussion, this first call, as to whether or not there would be an appetite, uh, by the legislature to maybe bring that back up. It wasn't concluded. It was not on the governor's call, and I don't know that it will be, but that dialogue and that preparation, uh, would remain there for the number of, um, projects that were in the, in twenty-nine seventy-four. We can go back to that, but in the spirit, or, uh, in the interest of time, Senate Bill eight forty-eight, uh, we discussed, and that was a toll bill, uh, that was relevant to a project and, uh, in, in Flugerville, a valuable project, uh, that would be accessed, uh, and the, the dilemma or the headwinds from, uh, that particular proposal was its fiscal impact. As I mentioned, the hotel bill, there, any bill that is gonna have state revenue will have the Comptroller provide a fiscal note.
Fiscal impact for both-
Pardon me?
Fiscal impact for both Texas and us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so, um, I will say that through, uh, James, Thomas, Brianna, uh, we've had a good dialogue. We were part of a good dialogue, uh, during the legislation, legislative session with Texas. To understand this, my understanding is that your staff worked together a very valuable meeting with Texas that, that from what I understand was very productive, moving the discussion forward. Um, as we talked early on in the session, um, it was my proposal and, and, uh, my colleague Jay McCart, who worked with me along, uh, alongside, uh, during the session, that that particular issue probably needed a longer-term, uh, additional, longer-term, uh, dialogue proposal, uh, but still waiting to see and moving and trying to dialogue on eight forty-eight. Uh, but as, uh, you don't see here, but that bill was filed, um, there was not a companion in the House, and the bill did not have a hearing in Senate Transportation. Uh, we kind of anticipated that, and we checked with the committee chairman, with the committee staff. Uh, understandably, um, there is typically a, a general, no bills with fiscal notes are gonna move. They break from that on occasion and, and sometimes conveniently, but in this case, uh, Texas, uh, put together a fiscal note that, that, uh, we could not, uh, overcome, in my, in my opinion. And, and so, um, upside, of course, the, the trail bill did pass. That was valuable. Um, I do wanna say that alongside the legislative priorities and agenda, there were a lot of other municipal legislative efforts that, that were very important, that we stay in tune with, and, and we did with Brianna and the legislative team, um, outside, kind of outside the scope of our priorities, but it was still our responsibility to bring it to your attention. Uh, a lot of things happened. Uh, my understanding is that a few of you may have taken up the TML legis, post-legislative wrap-up. I, I encourage you to do that. Uh, it's very valuable. I love my friends over at TML, and they do really, really good work in, uh, keeping up with, with legislation. So that's, that's it for there. I can, I can go further. I can stop here. Uh, I will follow your lead.
Thank you, Adam.
Could we go back to the Qualified Hotel Project? Because I wanna, uh, make sure, those of us on the legislative committee probably have a better understanding, but I wanna spell it out for the other folks. That, uh, the amendment that was put on in the Senate was put on by a member who has since indicated he's not running for reelection. Uh, but, um, that amendment was supported unanimously by the Senate. All the Democrats, all the Republicans, every single one of them said, "We want this to pass with this amendment." In the forty years that I've been following, uh, uh, the Texas Legislature, not, not with your attention to detail, but I've never seen an instance where every Democrat and every Republican in the Senate agreed on something that was contentious like that. Um, so I think that that, uh, is discouraging, uh, for the, the prospect of, of moving forward with qualified hotel project bills in the future. That's, that's my read on it, and it, you're the professional. You may have a more insightful read. I wouldn't say that's dead, but I would say it's on life support in terms of-
What you're, what you're telling me-
Being able to go forward with that in the future.
So the sponsor in the House refused to accept the amendment?
That's correct.
All right, is, would it not pass if a different House member sponsored it?
Well, the, the, the sponsor in the House who refused to go along with it used to be Speaker. So he's got a, a big stick.
There, there's, there's, um-
I feel like there's more play.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's other reasons for why that occurred.
I feel like there is-
Which still may exist, to David's point, in future sessions, which is-
Is that, is that only true for an omnibus bill, or would that be true if we were able to separate it?
Um, so here's the problem. Uh, great, that's a great, that's a great question, what you asked.
Is it dead because it's omnibus? And my understanding is that large cities wanted one thing and, and small cities didn't, didn't care.
I would actually say I would change that. I would say that one large city wanted something and the rest of the state.
So we had an omnibus bill that excluded that one city?
But the problem is this, and this is the point that, why these become omnibus bills in the first place, is that the way these have become creatures of the ledge is by wrapping them all together. When they are, where they're by themselves, standstill bills, they usually don't have a chance. And what instead, what allows for more momentum on this, never wanna be on the same page and, hey, listen, yes, this is something that's gonna benefit Flugerville, but you know what? It's also gonna go ahead and benefit Bedford, Texas. We're gonna have something entirely right here as well. You know, you're gonna see something in Abilene. That's how the omnibus happened with that. This is the first time this has happened. Um, I'm trying to choose my words, as you see. So, um, that, that's happened with these type of bills. And the problem is moving forward, that this toolset, which we, I mean, it's a great toolset, a great opportunity for us, um, just kind of like how Frisco had a great toolset and how they were able to go ahead and, you know, the sales tax deal that we were with, their ISDs. Um, it may not be applicable or available to us moving forward. So we have to be more inventive, PCDC's in the audience, um, regarding how we're going to look at Project Greenfield and what tools we can utilize to, to, to bring what we want moving forward. I wish I could say, hey, listen, if it was just a different person, it'd be okay. I wish I could say, hey, listen, if it was just us putting a bill out there, it would be okay. But realistically speaking, the, the way the tea leaves are working, um, this is probably something that we're not gonna see mu- much of moving forward, if, if at all, again.
Or maybe not.
Which sucks.
All right. Brianna?
Yep. Um, so I'll go at a, a very high overview. I'm not gonna dive deep. Some of you went to the TML legislative wrap-up at a very high level. Um, bills that didn't pass in the regular session were related to sales tax consummation reform. So that's related to the, um, lawsuit that occurred on where sales tax goes, depending on who buys it, where it ships, all of that. The change didn't occur, so it stays the same as is now. Um, the, uh, some property tax restructuring for cities didn't pass, and then broad, uh, land use pre- preemptions and open government changes were some things that didn't pass. What did pass, uh, some property tax transparency, which is just some slightly different language you see at the, on the front page of the budget book, some zoning process changes, um, AI training. There's a, an increase in AI training and transparency. The Uvalde Strong Act passed, which just, uh, changes some training and collaboration requirements for, uh, PDs and emergency personnel.
Do you wanna highlight the ETJ change?
At this time, no. Apologize. I don't have my notes on that one.
It's okay.
No, I do apologize.
It's okay.
Um, and some open meeting notice reforms, which, uh, you'll, you've hear about, uh, later this evening, related to some of the, the process changes for council. So moving forward. After legislative session, a first special session was called by, uh, Governor Abbott. We are currently in that first special session. There were several priorities. These are just the city-related priorities, but there were other priorities as well. A lot of flood, uh, relief and natural disaster preparation items, um, cut to property taxes, redistricting, police personnel records, and water project incentives. Uh, that first special session is occurring. It started July twenty-first. Um, just a couple updates and, and probably some things that you've heard in the news. Um, one bill that has been introduced, passed in the Senate, we anticipate going to the House, and I'll touch on that in a second, is SB nine, which, uh, changes the voter calculation rate from three point, uh, three point five percent to two point five percent for cities and counties over seventy-five thousand. It passed in the Senate, but, uh, we, uh, and going to the House. No action has occurred in the House. I'll get to that in a second. Another bill, uh, big topic right now, is redistricting, uh, for the congressional, um, map. So, uh, the impact to the city, the proposed congressional map, uh, at this time, right now, we're in a couple congressional districts. Seventeen and ten are two major ones, which is, uh, represent McCall and Sessions. And then some small portions are represented by, uh, Cesar and Doggett. The change puts all of the city of Flugerville in Congressional District eleven, which is August Fluger, with small portions of the ETJ in Congressional District ten.
Brianna, where is that district? Where's that? Yes, where's that district right now? Who do we be in with?
Uh, West Texas.
West Texas.
Way out there.
What example of cities in West Texas will we be in if we had to redistrict?
Midland and Odessa.
Who's, who's the current representative in that district?
August Fluger.
Oh, really?
Oh, we would expect you might get the majority to vote around here.
You know that somebody literally looked it up, and they said, "Oh, Fluger. Okay, yeah, that sounds about right."
So we're gonna lose Pete Sessions? Is that what you're telling me?
Oh, we lose everybody. And we, and we become, we join, um, football rivals with Odessa and, um, Midland.
And those are, how many hours away from us? Five, six?
Interesting, huh?
Um, so part of the, the special session, part of the update on that, is, uh, at this time, action hasn't occurred in the House for any bills that were passed, uh, most bills are passed in the Senate, including SB nine and, and the redistricting map. Um, that is because House members have, uh, left the state, and there isn't a quorum at this time. And so, uh, the latest update today is that the governor has called for sign-dye to occur on Friday. If they're, if they don't meet a quorum by Friday, uh, with an immediate second, an immediate second special session to be called, uh, over the weekend. And then the same items that are on the agenda, uh, currently for the special session are expected to occur for the second special session and possible new agenda items at this time. Uh, we don't know exactly what those are. So that's the first special session. So, we're here today to talk about, uh, that, that's your update on the regular session, high overview, and then the special session, the first one. We also wanna talk about legislative priorities for the interim as well, uh, interim session, and, uh, as we move forward. I, in your packet, you have our current legislative agenda, so I'm just going to very quickly hit what is on our current agenda at a very high level. Uh, generally, we support legislation that advances our strategic goals, public welfare, local authority, and local control, and we oppose legislation that reduces those items, uh, reduces revenue or imposes unfunded mandates. There's some specific legislative support, like reversing limitations on annexation, development standards, enabling diverse water-saving landscapes, opposing revenue reduction, erosion of parkland, weakening of land, land use. Of course, we monitor legislation affecting areas like public safety, water rights, um, human resources policies, and funding for parks. Uh, and then we have community collaboration and support line priorities of the ISD, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. So as we look forward to this interim, uh, we wanna discuss what our priorities for the interim look like. Bills that you might seek passage on or are interested in seeing, um, some interim discussions on, general positions and other priorities or changes that you would like to see.
Could you go back one slide real quick? I just wanna get some language there. Um, we've got support, uh, aligned priorities of, uh, the ISD and the Chamber of Commerce. Something that I've provided to, uh, the city manager, uh, I, I think a couple days ago, maybe, maybe yesterday, uh, was the legislative agenda from, uh, CapCog, uh, related to the special session. One item on there in particular, uh, which is, uh, an alliance with the Texas nine-one-one Alliance, uh, trying to update the emergency, uh, communications fee. Right now, it's fifty cents on your cell phone bill. Uh, it goes to fund nine-one-one services, uh, and that, I believe, hasn't changed since nineteen ninety-seven, uh, which doesn't seem like that long ago, uh, but it might be the year I graduated, so.
It doesn't seem that long ago to you.
I, I didn't have a cell phone until ninety-eight. So I, I think it may be appropriate for us to also, uh, include community collaboration with, uh, our regional partners like, uh, CapCog. I don't know if Campo has a, a legislative agenda, but, uh, CapCog, we, we have one there.
Yeah, no, because realistically speaking, um, especially CapCog's role, you know how it is. You're too wickedous when it comes to those items, and we're already, by being a member, by you being there, we're already, we're aligned. Like what your vote is, that's, it's already, we were adopted into it. But it's not bad to list them.
So is that something that you're saying we should just follow or?
I don't know if we should, uh, add some specific items. Um, CapCog, we're also looking at the, um, the ability of, uh, regional flood response. CapCog does run, uh, Warren, Central Texas, so the emergency notifications. Uh, a lot of that you see reflected in, uh, the current call for the, uh, the legislative special session. Uh, so many of those items, I think, uh, you know, we should be advocating for, CapCog is advocating for. I don't know if we need specific line items in what we want to, uh, pursue, or if it works better as adding CapCog's agenda to the, uh, the community collaboration pillar, uh, of our legislative agenda. Uh, perhaps I'll leave that up to the legislative subcommittee to, to sort out the specific details. Uh, but I just wanna make it, uh, clear that, you know, there are a lot of things going on regionally, uh, not just between us, the ISD, and the Chamber of Commerce, that, uh, we, we should be supporting.
And here's the hard part, is that, like I said, we, by him being on there, isn't, that's, that's us saying, yeah, we support that. So it doesn't hurt to say that, you know, we actually have it listed with, uh, in reality, with that.
So you're saying we should fire Doug and put you in charge?
Absolutely. Put, put, put Doug in charge of that aspect. But I mean, I, I, I think that, are we really, so are we asking for what we want moving forward right now? Is that the conversation or?
Yeah, so part of the discussion was our priorities for the interim session, so that we know what we wanna focus on during that time period.
I, I think that we need to get some, um, whenever we get a chance, either here or in our, um, what do we call those lunch and learns? Um, the ETJ, 'cause I think that, that's a pretty significant change, um, that's occurred. And, uh, I think that's gonna look further into the realities of what we're looking at here with that.
And Brianna, when you say in the interim, are you talking about, uh-
And Brianna, when you say in the interim, are you talking about uh during the interim sessions, whether it's special session two, three, four, five?
Uh, the, the in-between, not necessarily special sessions, um but more so as we are in that time.
Prepare for next.
We, we got a bit of a late start on this session, I felt like. So, yes, I, this feels early to start preparing, but it's probably the exact right time.
And I really appreciate, and appreciate Eddie being here too regarding this other aspect.
Well, it is budget time, so.
Eddie, is there anything? Wow. Shots fired. Eddie is a good starter.
I'm saying that.
This is when we decided we're gonna spend money on them, yeah.
Eddie, is there, is there anything in particular that you think that we need to focus on? I can't see him.
Thank you, thank you, Brianna. Um, I think that the, the, the discussion with the hotel, qual- qualified hotel project is a larger discussion about economic development tools. And, you know, um ninety-seven was not that long ago, one year. But, you know, over the course of the sessions that I've been working, not only with state agency, but in this capacity, um, that dialogue has changed. And, and there's a little more, um, I will call it responsible scrutiny. And I think the qualified hotel projects, the three-eighty, the three-eighty-ones, the project finance owns, all those tools um are just being looked at a little more stringently. And I don't know that they're necessarily the, you know, n- not, not.
They're not dead in the water.
Not gonna be, not considered, but there is just a level of scrutiny that, that, that hasn't been there before. And that doesn't mean there's been irresponsible behavior. But the local tools that, that the, that, that communities are using for economic development are looked at a little more stringently. Uh, the three-twelves, the three-eighties, three-eighty-ones.
And, and, and let's be clear. The school districts can tell us that those tools can summarily go away.
Certainly, certainly. And so, and, and so can the legislature.
Yeah.
And so, there, there's times where um some ideas may not prohibit something, but, but some ideas may, make some programs prohibitive, a little too stringent, maybe. So, you know, uh, from the economic development tools, I think, given where, where this community is, just in, in moving forward in such a good way and at such a good pace, I think um economic development is just a, uh, an area in, in bucket of, of policy that, that you might want to really stay close to, as, as I know you all do.
Thanks, sir. I think smart.
We good?
So, for clarity, does that mean we're still open to pursuing the qualified hotel project?
Yes, it needs to be. We need to discuss about what tools we have to tool about and what tools we can still see.
Well, we, we need to work on strategy on how to get it passed.
Because, cause.
Which is, this is the time to do that, right?
Well.
Next year? In preparation?
Yeah, in prep, yeah. I think that.
I think our strategy is correct. It's just the legislature that's not correct.
There, there, there will, there will, there will likely be some studies in the interim on that.
Yeah.
For better or for worse.
Uh, the strategy we had worked with the, the, the li- the legislature before last, but since that's a new legislature, they've got, who knows who's gonna.
Well, there'll be a new one.
We've got to adapt our strategy to the new personnel. Yep.
There will.
So economic, so economic development tools, E T J, anything else?
Yeah, we can come up with that stuff.
Alright.
So, Eddie, that sounds like uh a, a, a study process in terms of what we want to put uh together. Um, uh, do we want to talk about that with the whole counselor? Would we want to refer that to the subcommittee and have the subcommittee make a report to the council about how we, we, we put that together and what we push? I, I'm thinking we probably want to bring some, but uh at least uh one or two folks from the uh P C D C in to talk about the economic development pieces legislatively.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll put a group together.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good job, man.
Oh, Brianna, I would be remiss if I did not say congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Alright, uh, let's see, well, we. Am I on eight A?
If we can do seven very briefly, that is the election.
I'm sorry, which one?
It's the supplemental. It's the first supplemental agenda.
Okay, yeah. I didn't see that. There we go, yeah. So, I have an item on the, on the first supplemental agenda, which is for election resolution, discussing its interaction to approve a resolution, ordering a general election for November the fourth, twenty twenty-five, for the election of mayor and council place one.
I hear that's important. So moved.
Second.
That was quick.
I noticed Doug voting for this.
Alright, motion carried.
Doesn't, doesn't Doug have to recuse himself from this?
Alright, going back to eight A, correct? Discussing consideration on a, on a rough pro- is that correct? Rough proportionality appeal pursuant to Texas dot local government code two-one-two dot nine oh four for approximately eighty-five point four-nine-seven acre tract situated in the Peter Conrad Survey Section number seventeen, abstract number two-hundred in Travis County, Texas, known as the Deck and Wilkie Track, generally located north of S H forty-five, east of Heatherwild Boulevard, west of S H one-thirty, and any matters related to the same. Robin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Robin Miga. I am the Development Engineering Director for the city of Flugerville. And tonight I have before you a proportionality appeal for the Deck Wilkie Tract. Um, I apologize, there was a exhibit for the preliminary plan in your uh packets, but there's not a map in my presentation. So, this property is located north of State Highway forty-five, on the east side of Heatherwild Boulevard, on the west side of State Highway one-thirty. Um, this parcel has an approved preliminary plan, and I'm gonna kind of walk y'all through what an approved preliminary plan entails. So, this project had an approved per- preliminary plan on June twenty-fifth. As part of the approval process, if you have residential proposed, or if your zoning district allows for residential, you're required to go through the parkland dedication process. What that means is you take your plat to the, the Parks Commission, and as part of the Parks Commission approval, you present what you are going to propose to meet our parkland dedication requirements. As part of that proposal, they proposed for fee and lieu, and so the fee and lieu for that, for the approximately seventeen acres that would be required for the sixteen hundred and fifty dwelling units. Uh, and that amount is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and then there's a development fee that's required in addition to that, and that is the six hundred and sixty-two thousand amount. So as part of their approval, they proposed not to dedicate par- parkland, and they proposed to do that by fee and lieu, which is what was approved by the Parks Commission, and then subsequently approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. And so that preliminary plan, as I mentioned, was approved in June of twenty twenty-four, following that they submitted for subdivision waivers. Um, as part of their preliminary plan, there are roadway extensions to the north, the north that were required to be extended by our subdivision ordinance. Uh, that road is Barkway, and then there is Peach Vista. Peach Vista is actually in our mobility plan. Barkway is just a requirement of our subdivision ordinance. So what the subdivision code says is that if there is a road stub to your property, you're required to extend it into your subdivision. Uh, so their preliminary plan shows a kind of unique tangent that they created, which is Barkway extends, and then Trinity Acres or Trinity Settlement uh connects over to Peach Vista. Um, within that, through the purple, through the proportionality process, we have since told them that they are able to amend that preliminary plan to eliminate the Barkway uh connection through Trinity Settlement. They can cul-de-sac Barkway, and then they would meet our subdivision ordinance requirements. They have not submitted.
Is there any way while she's doing that, that we can actually pull up a map?
I, I do believe that map is, i- is helpful. I'm more interested, because you talked about this being a, a preliminary plan. Is there a, a map or a plan provided by uh the applicant that demonstrates the use uh and, and the um division of use types on the property?
Through their preliminary plan, there are dwelling units that are contemplated. Um, the preliminary plan, I have it right here.
I, I'm just curious, because it seems like that uh connection that I saw for Barkway into Trinity, something or other, uh is uh a way to provide a buffer to the existing neighborhood? Uh, and I'm just trying to understand if I'm, if I'm reading that accurately, and I'm trying to understand what happens if that road does become uh a cul-de-sac or, or is otherwise abandoned, what that does to the layout of the residential units on the parcel.
Thank you.
I, I do think that that area is a buffer area and has possibly townhomes approved, but at this stage, there's no approved site plans or anything. So it's owned uh C L four, and C L four allows for multifamily.
Okay.
Um, sorry.
So this is what we got?
No, yeah, that's helpful.
Um, so this is Barkway that extends, i- and it currently creates a sort of right angle, if you will, over to Peach Vista. Peach Vista comes down this way, and then you have Row Lane that comes, sort of bisects the property. And then there is a road that comes through the middle, uh which is called Trinity Acres. This one's called Trinity Settlement, I believe. And then that connects you down to State Highway forty-five. There are a total of six lots. Uh, there are two lots that are on the frontage, uh two lots here, and then there are, there's an out parcel sort of created by this triangle from Peach Vista. And then what is creating that sort of right angle, there's an out parcel there.
And the, and the proposed drainage easements in the upper right?
Yes, sir.
And there's no parkland dedicated on this site?
No, sir.
Not even around the uh, the drainage area?
No, sir.
That concerns me, that Parks and Rec and Planning and Zoning approves such uh a large waiver, seventeen acres. I, I'm, in general, I'm, I'm not in favor of.
And it's not considered a waiver. They presented their proposal. They stated that that is an option.
Fee and lieu.
Yeah, that's their option. They can provide fee and lieu, and then that amount, which is forty-three thousand, five sixty, times however many acres required to dedicate. And then that money goes into that service area, so that you can um build a park that does provide that regional draw. Um, and as Mr. Weiss mentioned, uh there is a play for all park that is proposed, and I'm bringing that to you at the August twenty-sixth agenda to discuss that.
Is there a location established for that?
Don't we have a location as well?
Shane would love to tell you all that on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Okay.
That's correct.
Is that? That's in next year's budget.
Yeah, I believe it's.
It's, it's.
Current capital improvement.
Yeah, I was about to say, it's, it's in our, it's in our C I P. Where's, is Shane here?
And currently funded by.
Yes, and we will discuss it and consider next.
Yeah, I want to be, yeah, I want to be careful. This, this meeting is not about parkland or parkland dedication.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Wake up to the presentation.
Are you telling us we have to stick to our posted agenda?
I know, the problem is parkland dedication is literally the first thing that's said right there.
So, I wanted to emphasize that, because I know that.
Yeah.
It is part of the development. I know that residents have spoken about this play for all abilities park. And I also know that that's been communicated to city staff. I just wanted to explain to y'all that as part of their proposal and their approved preliminary plan, that is not something that has been approved.
Were, were they aware of our id- our, our thought process or our C I P regarding all abilities park when they proposed this?
I don't have those details. I apologize.
They haven't proposed it to us.
I'm wondering if uh, if we should postpone discussion of this until the twenty-sixth meeting.
I, I believe we have a, a statutory requirement to.
We, we do, but th- so, I understand that there are issues with parkland and parkland dedication. But none of that has to do with the rough proportionality analysis that is before you tonight. My understanding is the staff wanted to give you a full picture of the whole project before we got into the details of the rough proportionality analysis. The parkland dedication, the, you know, whether or not they can pay a fee in lieu of, all of those issues are not relevant to this rough proportionality analysis, not part of tonight's agenda. So we shouldn't get into that discussion.
And our statutory requirement means we have to make the decision between now and the twenty-sixth.
We have a, we, we have a, we have a, we have a statutory deadline, opted review. I don't have it memorized what that is, but we have a statutory deadline to consider their appeal. And then um they have a certain amount of time where they have to make some decisions. But even if we bump it, it doesn't matter be, it, because the parkland dedication has zero to do with this rough proportionality analysis. It has nothing to do with it.
With the, well, it has nothing to do with the legal uh issue, but it does have to do with the eh, the, the larger issue about what, what we're doing with, with parks, and particularly with this kind of park.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
I, I, I think, uh, you know, we're talking about whether or not, uh, will we be discussing tonight whether or not to allow for the stubbing of Barkway? Is that part of this conversation?
Yes, sir, and that's actually already been communicated to them that they don't have to extend it. They just have to pres- they have to amend their approved preliminary plan to do so.
To reflect as such.
Yes.
And David, and, and David, I think you're, I mean, I think you're right, and I think that Charlie has it right, but I, I get what you're saying. I do.
Well, tr- tr- let me ask. It's not pertinent to this discussion. You're saying the all abilities park is not pertinent to this discussion, but if people in our community are led to believe that, that all abilities park is pertinent to this discussion, and they're emailing us with something I believe is misleading, wouldn't that make it a part of this discussion or no?
The agenda item is to consider the rough proportionality appeal. And this has nothing to do with the rough proportionality.
Okay, so.
Let's go, let's go further.
I want to pick up on what Doug said earlier, because I want to make sure that we're not in violation of the deadline. Do we have a deadline to consider this that prevents us from bumping this to the twenty-sixth?
When's the date?
If I may, it says to do it within a reasonable time, and then from the date of the evidence being heard, which would be today, you have thirty days.
Yeah.
Which is the deadline that was in the agenda item.
We can hear it tonight. We do not have to make a decision.
That's correct.
Yes.
And, yeah, you can, and, you know, my recom- my re- my recommendation was, was to be for y'all to hear this tonight. Gather all the information. There may be more information that you'd like to hear based on the applicant, the appellant's presentation and staff. Then bump a decision, and you can then actually bump your decision. You don't have to make a decision tonight. You can bump your decision to a future date.
Why don't we, why don't we get through it?
Why don't we get through it, and we'll hear, I'm, I'm guessing since it's an appeal, we're gonna hear from developers too as well.
Yes, sir. So, as part of the statute, we're required to have a licensed engineer perform the proportionality analysis. I want to introduce you to Jeff Whitaker. He is the engineer with Kimley Horn who did this analysis for us. Uh, they are also who did our roadway impact fee study.
Don't we see Jeff all the time?
You do.
He introduced us to him.
Well, thank you for having me again, um, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a little bit about myself. I know I'm familiar with you doing the mobility plan, but um I've done roadway impact fees across the state and proportionals in forty cities. Some of the ones that you referenced in, in the memos, San Antonio proportionality, I developed that policy as well, working in the city of Austin. So I'm familiar with answering any questions as we go through this, but I'm gonna focus on this site, but if you have comparison questions across the state, I'm happy to answer it.
What about North Texas? Where are you at?
I, 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 I know a lot about North Texas. I actually office out of Fort Worth, and I developed Fort Worth's policy in the city of Fort Worth as well, so.
Not Plano though, right? We don't like Plano.
Plano doesn't have impact fees, or, and they're pretty much built out, so every city's in a different.
Frisco, Prosper.
Familiar with Frisco, Prosperance, Lina. So just.
Oh, you brought case law.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm an engineer, but I'm also an I S P, so I'm not giving you legal advice. I just want to give you some background of why when we do analysis, what we're thinking about, and I think it just helps for those who are familiar with this case, just a little bit of background. So, there's two case laws that are really important to a proportionality analysis. That's the Nolan and Dolan case. The Nolan is about a ru- an essential nexus, and really what that means is, is the people building the information, are they gonna use it? Um, I don't think there's any argument on this case about the nexus. Um, we're building roadways. Most of this, the reason this is important, their proportionality analysis is really about the transportation infrastructure that's required as preliminary plat. So most transportation infrastructure has the nexus. They build roads, the development use roads. We're not worried about the nexus. What we're really worried about is the Dolan versus City of Tiger case, which is a case about proportionality. Um, this, the short man version of the proportionality was an existing hardware store that they wanted to expand the hardware store. Well, the new city had, the city had a new trail next to it, and the city said, well, as part of this relatively minor expansion, you have to build this trail. They protested and said, my impacts are not really justifying this trail being built. And so, um, as a planning nerd, I've actually been out there. This is the trail that they built in the city of Tiger. That's a plaque on there on the bottom of the ground, if you see it, and it shows the case law that says, and when you go in the hardware store, you can see what they expanded, and they built this trail with it, and they, basically out of the case law, um, it says that you have to provide, it has to be proportional to impacts of the development. Um, really what's important to this, and I think more relevant, and that's about a trail, um, is the Stafford versus Flowermount case. And the few items I want to point out in this case is, um, is that Stafford is a single-family development with two-hundred-and-forty-seven houses. What was happening is the city, the town of Flowermount had said Simmons Road, which is the road on the bordering it, um, was a two-lane asphalt facility. Their standard was a two-lane concrete, so the city said, you have to upgrade your border street, basically your border street policy. Throughout the process, the developer protested, said, I, this two-lane existing asphalt road is okay. I don't need it. I don't need it. And so, fast forward um to the future. And so fast forward, um, to the future, the aftermath of the Flowermount details was that the Texas Supreme Court said, you satisfied that Nolan case, there's a nexus, you're using Simmons Road, but the Dolan improvements are not roughly proportional or equivalent to the development, the impact. Um, when you read through the case law, not giving legal advice, but a lot of that was a process. This town never actually proved that, that they, this was fair to them. They never went through that. Another thing I want to point out, um, is the whole case was about Simmons Road. If you notice, there's a lot of other roads inside the development that are serving, they have to provide access to the single-family developments. So that they were not protesting the internal local access streets. They were proposing this off-site, kind of more system facilities. And then the Texas Supreme Court says, we need to correlate the developers' contributions to their actual impact on the system. So this is just a rough, just to get your idea of what we're using. And the reason I, I bring this up is because, um, when I started at Kimley Horn in two thousand and five, that was actually the year that rough proportionality was introduced into chapter two twelve of the Local Government Code. So my whole career, we were kind of at the front end and kind of working through in two thousand and six to see if Fort Worth started looking at it in two thousand and nine, the city of San Antonio. But really, if a city requires something from a developer as a condition of development approval, they must provide that it's proportional to the, to the impact of the development. So that's really what I'm trying to illustrate tonight. I'm going to walk you through a little bit of our methodology, just so you've, you've had the memos provided to you, but I want to kind of just add some clarity to that as well. For this site, the council really wants to approve the appeal. The developer essentially would pay for, wouldn't pay for the impact fees or build any of the roads in the subdivision, leaving the cost of the system improvements and mitigating to the residents of Flugerville. Um, roughly with the numbers that are proposed in there, there would be a roughly cost of twelve million dollars additional to provide the infrastructure between Peach Vista and Row Lane. And I'll walk you through that a little bit. Um, just to give you a little highlights of the development, um, sixteen hundred and forty-five units would equate to roughly over forty-five hundred residents. So I learned tonight that's a medium city in the, in the state of Texas. Our Westlake Hills size of city, so this is not a small development with a little amount of people. This is a large development with four thousand people and sixteen hundred and forty-five, forty units. So think of that as your.
With, with no park. Sorry.
Yes.
Well, and, and.
You quit taking your shots.
So I just want to keep that in mind when you're thinking about a hundred acres with six hundred people building the infrastructure needs. That's really what, as an engineer, I'm tasked with not looking at, instead of the legality, I'm looking at what's fair to the development. And I'm looking at what's needed to serve that development. That's really my task. And so one thing I wanted to show with you, this is actually what the state statute tells us to do. A municipality has to, as a condition of approval to bear the portion of costs, they have to determine that's roughly proportionate by a professional engineer retained on municipality. So it's on the municipality to evaluate the site. And the reason I put this in here, this is the entire law, basically. It doesn't tell us how to do it, so we've developed methodology over the years. I'm going to share a few methodologies, including the one you have.
Basically the entire law or is the entire?
Well, the, that is the, how, how to do it, the rest of it is the dispute process. So the next B, C, D, E are about the dispute process. And this is where it talks about, they may appeal the determination of the governing body and within thirty days, you have to make the final determination. We talked about that a second ago. So this, the next part is the, the dispute process. One thing that this does outline doesn't diminish the chapter three ninety-five, which is impact fees. And that kind of gets intertwined a little bit, it's confusing because you have a fee versus proportionality. They are two separate things, but they a lot of times come together and we'll talk about that a little bit. So really what we have to do is think about an individualized determination. I think that's really important is because as you think about it, when you, when you look at a site, um, we're really looking at the impacts of that site. And that's really what the, the court said. The court said it needs to be individualized, you need to look at the details of each site. It says you can look at the total facility system, not just the specific exaction. So really what that means is if you think about a site, they have a big radius of impact. So a development might go through ten different intersections and that intersection may be ten percent here, ten percent here, ten percent here. Where you can add up all the ten percent and put it somewhere else. So you can add, sum up all of its impacts and put it towards an improvement. And then one of the fun things I, it's kind of a joke as an engineer, calculations do not require mathematical exactitude. That's a quote from the aftermath of, you tell an engineer he doesn't have to calculate things, it's kind of counterintuitive.
It's like, is that ad mathem?
So really we're trying to work through the, the process and I'm going to go through the highlights of that. So just a little bit of history, um, Robin already did a good job. The preliminary plan was approved in June twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-five. The TA was approved as part of the preliminary plan process. The final plat of lots, one and two, was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August fourth. So there's some moving forward on the property on the final plat. And in that final plat, approximately thirty-one point two-nine acres and with the extension of Trinity Acres, which is that road that goes from forty-five to Row Lane. So it's, it's about a thousand feet roughly. That has been approved as part of that, that final plat process. One of the things that's really important to me to think about this, and I reference back to the Flowermount case, there are roadways that serve a greater good. There are roadways that are, that are system facilities that actually are designed to not only serve the development, but serve the community. And those roads are what's really important. And that's really that Simmons Road was designed to not just serve that development, but other roads. There are roads that are site facilities. And the reason I start with the Stafford estates is I don't think anyone would argue in the case of a single-family development that your local street in front of your house. In most cases is designed, I know there are some other facilities that are not, but in most cases is designed to serve you. So we start thinking about that, we have looked through the side of it, what is really designed to serve this development? And is a hundred percent attributable to this development versus what is systems facilities? One thing that I'll, that I'll, that I'll point out as we go through this is there's several things that we'll talk about in a minute. But we've lumped in everything that's on the preliminary plan and said, what is a system facility with a site facility? And I'll slowly go through these. Row Lane is a system facility. It is a arterial on the thoroughfare plan. It clearly serves more than the develop, than the thing. They're requested to build about thirteen hundred feet of Row Lane. Uh, that's what's on the preliminary plan. They're actually only dedicating the right of way on the preliminary plan right now, but there has not been discussion of what's construction yet. Peach Vista Drive is about two thousand feet. That would connect to the north down to Row Lane. Um, that's roughly two thousand feet. Um, on the plat, it shows that they dedicated thirty feet, uh, half the right of way on the preliminary plan.
And, and they're responsible to construct, uh, how many lanes?
Uh, the discussion of what's being constructed on Peach Vista has not occurred. At this time, the numbers I've been presented to you are the full collector section, which would be two lanes on Row Lane.
Two, two lanes?
Two lanes on Peach Vista and four lanes on Row Lane.
Okay.
But there hasn't been detailed construction.
And I'm sorry, what was the distance on Row Lane?
Row Lane is a thousand, one thousand three hundred and eight feet. And then Peach Vista is two thousand.
The engineer being exact, one thousand three hundred and eight, okay.
I'm just quoting what's on their preliminary plan, so.
So it's, so basically with four lanes, that's one lane mile.
Correct. Roughly, yeah. And then there's some roadway impact fees. And one thing that was clear, we'll talk about in a minute, that is a system facility. Anything that they construct that's considered a system facility, they will receive credit on their impact fees. And we've outlined that to them. One of their comments that we provided back to them in the twenty-four million dollar mark is that they were counting both the system facilities and impact fee credit. We will be providing impact fee credits when those are applied for. At this point, nothing's been built, nothing can be applied, but they are eligible for reimbursement.
And, and the rationale is because it's a system facility, which is going to be able to fit not just themselves, but everybody else. Consequently, we'll give credit for that.
And we know for a fact Row Lane would be that because it's identified as that.
So just to clarify though, would it be Row Lane, Row Lane turn lanes and Peach Vista drive? That would, they're all listed under a system facility? So would the construction of all three of those be a credit towards the roadway impact fees?
Um, they would have to, the, what the statute says it has to, or the ordinance says in the city of Flugerville, it says it's identified on the capital improvement plan of the impact fees. It would automatically receive credit upon application. If it's not on there, there'll be a determination made by the city that determination hasn't been occurred because we don't know exactly what cross-section they're building, et cetera. So they have to apply for that credit, but it would be something we wouldn't be able to know at this time. But if it's ineligible and they apply for it, yes.
So theoretically, if those three aligned with the plans or the roadway impact fee, CIP or the transportation master plan, then those could be credits.
Yeah, well, mo, most likely, um, on a term, determination like a Peach Vista probably wouldn't receive a full amount of credit because two lanes would be required to serve the development anyway. They may only receive partial credit for the oversized capacity. A lot of times if you think about a water line, if a development needs an eight-inch water line, but the master plan says build a ten-inch water line, you only credit them, oversized participate for the delta increase. So similar to a Peach Vista, if they need two lanes to build for fire access, whatever their development, you would only credit them. And this is a similar process at other cities that New Braunfels used, it's only the added.
So, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is when they build those facilities, um, to the extent that it's included in the master transportation plan, they will receive credit. That's largely automatic to the extent that, that we determine which part of that is part of the, uh, not subject to the specific development?
Correct.
Okay.
Except on Row Lane, it'd be a hundred percent credit. Row Lane.
Row Lane a hundred percent, Peach Vista, so they're, they need, they're, if they build four lanes, they'd get credit for two. If they only built two lanes, they wouldn't get any credit.
Correct.
So my suggestion would be, and, uh, I don't know if you're going to have to do this again. On, on such a presentation, if you could put even like a, um, you know, a little footnote regarding that. Because the way it looks, it looks like, hey, okay, if they do all this, they're good, but once hearing the conversation, well, you know, Row Lane's good. But everything else, eh, depends on.
There's an asterisk on there, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's some asterisks and there's other, and I'll discuss a little bit when I get into the considerations. The site facilities, these are the ones, we talked about the Barkway extension. We've made the recommendation back to them that they could cul-de-sac it in. And so that, that, it's, it lists as a site facility, but our assumption is that that might go away, um, depending on some other discussions. Um, Trinity Acres Lane, this was, um, originally supposed to be Peach Vista that connects to the neighborhood all the way to forty-five. Um, because of some items that, it's not a continuous, um, element. It really serves to get the two, the two initial lots developed and it serves as their access to forty-five. It's really a local site-related facility. And then there's some pass-through easements. And the reason the pass-through easements are on there is because as you, if you think of single-family, you have lot size and block size. In order for you to meet the lot size and block size for these large sixteen hundred and forty-five acre apartment use, they have to have, um, connections to create that blocks. They actually create the lots. So this was actually the least expensive manner to meet the subdivision ordinance because you could build local streets and have drainage to meet that, just like a single-family development. They chose to do a fifteen-foot pass-through, pass-through easement to meet the subdivision ordinance to be able to plat and to be able to subdivide their lot and build the lots that they chose to. So we consider that a site-related facility. Suggested options, these are suggested options that we, um, discussed for the tract is the cul-de-sac requirement. Uh, the TA mitigation fees are eligible to count towards proportionality. And we needed a documentation, the current TA we had said no fees were being paid. So when, in their, in their study, it included the fees, but the current TA, the current adopted TIA said no fees were paid. So there was a little bit of discrepancy between what we were reviewing in the TIA versus what was provided in the documentation. One of the big issues when you look at the numbers is, is all throughout the numbers is, um, in a minute, um, the right-of-way appraisal was a big number. Um, according to their proportionality analysis that they said, they were looking at the maximum impact fee that's allowed in that service area. And I can discuss that a little bit. It was fifteen ninety per vehicle mile. So keep that number fifteen ninety for a vehicle mile. That came out roughly to six point three million dollars. The value of right-of-way that is suggested to be on their system improvements was about five point three million dollars. I need to look at that exact number. And that's on fair market value. It's roughly three million, million more than what the tat, the terrant, the Travis County Appraisal District would say it as. So if you think about it from a, I would say from an engineering standpoint, I have the sixteen hundred and forty-five unit development that says their proportional share is six point three million dollars. However, almost, almost all of it, about a million dollars is considered right-of-way. Where am I going to build the infrastructure of that? So that's when we started saying, we have to use an individualized determination for this because this site is a different site. And I'll describe that in a little bit. So the fifteen ninety was a impact fee calculation, which is a fee that's just calculated based on a CIP plan divided by the area. It's not an individualized determination. So we looked at an individualized determination, we looked at it two ways. Um, and I can compare this to other cities, um, that, what they do. The citywide roadway impact fee, if you look at the cost to produce all the roadways and the capacity of all the roadways, it comes out to thirty-four fifty-four. This is what it really costs a city to build a roadway per vehicle mile in the city. So if you imagine fifteen ninety versus thirty-four fifty-four. So when you look at, when you read the memo, the difference of the six point three million versus the thirteen million that we're saying, it's really coming from this number right here. That's because the fifteen ninety does not adequately pay for the roadways and the infrastructure demand. And so someone might ask me, why do we use thirty-four fifty-four? Um, if you look at the city, city of San Antonio's website, which was referenced, they use the number about forty-two hundred. Uh, they use different values for different things, but, um, their, their cost is forty-two hundred dollars per vehicle mile. So thirty-four fifty-four is a reasonable estimate. If I wanted to do a little bit more individualized determination, I look at Row Lane. If you just take Row Lane, this is the most math you'll see here. Row Lane, based on the estimates provided by the develop, the development, it's about three point four, three, three million four hundred and eighty-two dollars. And it's about thirteen hundred feet. I think I said thirteen oh eight in the original discussion. You equate that to four lanes divided by times eight hundred and forty vehicles per lane per hour. And that's the number that Campo uses, so that number comes straight from Campo. It comes out to forty-two ten per vehicle mile. So the reason we felt comfortable using the citywide average, because when we did the site-specific analysis of Row Lane, it was greater than the citywide average. So as a fairness, we said, we're going to do what the average Flugerville cost to build a roadway is in the Flugerville. So we use thirty-four fifty-four instead of the forty-two ten as a conservative estimate because they're also building Peach Vista and some other things. We could have utilized a combination of Peach Vista, which would have been higher than the number we use right now. But what, what we were trying to look at our site is what the goal of the proportionality analysis, if you go back to that list of system improvements that we're thinking, we're trying to show that we believe that the system improvements that the city is requiring is fair and reasonable. And so that's what our, our goal is really to do.
So what was the, what was the delta? Because you said you gave them a break between the thirty-four fifty-four and what we could have used.
We didn't calculate the deltas originally in our original memo, we did not show the forty-two ten to the applicant. We chose to use the thirty-four fifty-four and then when they questioned that, we, we provided the second one.
Seven hundred and fifty-six was the delta.
Yeah.
Thank you. Per vehicle mile, yes. Another thing that I will give some history, um, so our number, the number provided by the applicant was six point three million. Our number was thirteen point six million is about the impact of this development based on what we have. There's a few things to caveat that. Um, obviously our infrastructure costs are less because we were using terrant, Travis County Appraisal District data and other items. So one thing I'll point out is, um, when we started doing rough proportionality from two thousand and five to early two thousand and ten, we didn't use dollars. We actually used that vehicle mile I was talking about. And we were comparing how much vehicle miles does this site generate versus how much is it supplying? How much are they building? We don't care about dollars. How much are they supplying? How much are we building? I have not, this is, so this is the same number. This is the number that the applicant and, um, the engineer agreed upon, the, the applicant. Three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four vehicle miles is what we agreed upon. Doing the math, um, when you add up all the roadways they're building, including, and this one, I was trying to be conservative and not just look at site roads. I tried, I took their numbers and we're saying, we're going to ignore dollars on here. We're just going to say what your demand is. When they build Row Lane, it supplies eight hundred and thirty-two vehicle miles. Trinity supplies one hundred and eighty-eight vehicle miles. Parkway, which we said is not going to be built, but I included anyway, was two hundred and twenty-one vehicle miles. Peach Vista was three hundred and sixty-five for a total of sixteen oh seven. So if this was originally before, um, when we, before we created everything to cost and we were just looking at how much demand are they generating versus how much supply? It's three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four vehicle miles versus one thousand six hundred and seven vehicle miles. The reason I bring that up is because we sliced this two ways. There was a lot of debates about the cost. And so we were, I was thinking, okay, we, we're disagreeing on the cost. We believe that what we propose is correct. What if I just looked at the demand versus the supply and the demand versus supply results in the same cost? Is the two roadways, the two system roadways that were being requested seem proportional to the impact of the development? With that, I will entertain any questions or.
So it's hard without a good map. But when I'm, when I looked at what was provided, does Peach Vista go from Green Ridge? It doesn't go from Green Ridge all the way to forty-five, it goes down to Row Lane and then.
Comes across and goes down to.
Okay. So it's not just a straight shot?
Correct.
Okay. And that was some of the reason why the, what is it? Trinity Acres was not, was considered site-specific instead of system?
Provide the connection that the.
So if it was all one, if it was all one, then that whole road would be eligible to be a credit for the, or would be a system?
Yes, that's what our assessment was.
Okay, so the current design is part of.
Access their two lots and subdivide their two lots, et cetera, so. If they would connect it, we would consider that. But that connection, obviously they were looking at the site, the site plan was made so that they could have another lot right there. But if they would connect it to the lot, it would be considered.
And the reason that, oh, okay.
There, there we go, this is.
Thank you.
That is much better.
And then the reason it can't be connected just on the edge is because of some text doc.
My understanding, and I haven't had documentation of them that's on the plat, is that there's a controlled access because of the ramps being reversed, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the place that text not approved.
Oh, by Row Lane.
Uh, I think the north-south road that connects from forty-five to Row Lane. The reason that driveway access is where it is.
The driveway location is fixed by text doc.
Correct.
But for whatever reason, they wouldn't want to. But for whatever reason, they wouldn't want to curve that road through there, they need rectangular parcels for their development, if they curved that road, then it would be a system road.
That's what we, that was our recommendation, correct.
But obviously, I'm assuming that the developer's done their calculation on uh the, the value they can extract by having the more angular parcels.
Have to have them speak to that, but. Thank you for the map, this shows the improvements.
Yeah, absolutely. Um I, I do have a, a question, you listed this, you listed the, um and, and I don't remember the exact numbers, I think phase two was seven hundred uh multifamily units, phase one was nine, nine hundred multifamily units somewhere in that range, nine forty-five.
Yeah, one's seven hundred, one's nine hundred.
And, and I, I don't need the exact numbers. Um what, what confused me is I didn't hear any um single-family numbers. Only, only multifamily numbers.
When we were provided the uh analysis, we based it on the traffic studies approved at the time, and they only had multifamily.
They only.
In their, in their traffic study.
Uh and then I guess my question here is, you, I, I'm thinking single-family attached, but I'm, I'm assuming there's a designation between single-family attached and, and multifamily.
Like row houses?
Yeah, like a duplex, a fourplex, uh yeah, a, a row house of six.
I believe that's what was proposed in that lot that's broken up by the right angle. I'd have to confirm that.
From a traffic, from an analysis standpoint, they lump in.
Those would be lumped in as multifamily units?
Multifamily units, the townhomes would come under the same.
But, but are we not judging the multifamily units based on the, um, I, I'm gonna say the bedrooms?
No, it's based on units.
Like, how do we calculate vehicle miles if we don't understand the occupancy load of the unit?
It's based on the, the traffic study, and so really, I mean, most multifamily units have a similar mixture of bedrooms, so they're based on national, like, the way, the way that um the traffic analysis is done is they take similar apartment complex units and do an average trip generation. And generally, they have the same mix of single, single room, two rooms, three rooms, so um it's not.
Even though there's a variance in the actual structure utilized?
I, I would expect that in the type of unit, I would expect.
We also didn't have that information available to us at this time.
I guess, I guess regardless of that, my, um so my concern, you've, you've recommended that they could uh cul-de-sack that, uh that particular street. I don't really see much purpose to a cul-de-sack, uh if you're gonna truncate it, truncate it. Um having a cul-de-sack that comes between two houses, that, uh as opposed to having the houses facing the cul-de-sack.
I think the reason we recommend cul-de-sack is it didn't meet the extension of the subdivision ordinance.
Uh they, and it sounds like a loophole on, on meeting the ordinance, uh and uh not something that's real intentional. But my, my concern is, looking at this, if, if we get rid of that connection, then we likely lose the, the row house um product, which provides the buffer, and we end up with one big apartment complex with a huge yard that overlooks the, you know, the back fences there. Um I, I feel like we're gonna have some adjacency issues, and I appreciate uh the community that has raised the concern about potential cut-through tra- traffic, just wondering if the, the cure is worse than the disease, uh so to speak, if uh uh if we do eliminate that, then do we create a, a, a bigger problem for the community?
And the zoning ordinance does still have buffer yard requirements, so they're, they wouldn't be able to build multifamily right up against that property.
No, obviously, there'd be a setback requirement.
There'd be setback requirements, and there's height limitations on how tall the buildings could be adjacent to single-family. So I believe that that height limitation is thirty-five or forty-five feet, thirty-five? So they, and then there's a certain distance that that would be allowed, and so it would usually phase naturally, just by the zoning ordinance requirements.
You're still gonna get an apartment complex backing up to those fences as opposed to in the small individual yards backing up to those fences in an apartment complex across the street from those row houses. More like, more than likely.
There's many different residential neighborhoods that back up to multifamily.
Sure.
Um is there a?
One by you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, over there on the avenue.
Yes. Um is there a, a major difference in the calculation if something were a single-family um versus multifamily as far as vehicle miles, is one more than the other?
Um single-family is more.
Okay.
But per acre, multifamily is maybe more, so there's more units per acre. So multifamily is roughly half per unit, but obviously there's more units per acre.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Robin? What do we have?
So the applicant is here with a presentation as well, so I will hand it to them.
Do they have a map?
I believe they do, yeah.
Let's see what we got.
Council members, I'm Steve Drenner, uh with the law firm of the Drenner Group. And uh I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is SH forty-five LP, more specifically, you may know him as Monarch Carrington. I'm gonna uh run through something that I hope is uh helpful. Uh I would tell you that uh we disagree uh pretty profoundly with many of the things that uh you just heard, and I'm gonna point those out to you.
We do agree we're talking about the same property, that right?
We are talking about, and I'll prove that right here.
All right.
And we do have pictures. So here's where we are, as you know. Uh here's uh the zoning map that uh shows the bifurcation of the property CL four and CL five. And these are the details, we've got eighty-five and a half acres, uh it's undeveloped and has those zoning characteristics. Here's where we've been, and uh I would underline this, so we've been at this with staff since early March. And we really haven't uh moved the needle at all. So this is a sincere uh effort to have this discussion end at this level and not have to go to another forum. So uh we've, I think, aired it out about as well as you can, if you wanna look back at uh any of those uh letters, that detail is terrific, but we, we disagree with staff on some of those fundamental assumptions that you just heard about. So same cases, uh you got the, this just is the evolution of rough proportionality, and it ends up in the local government code. Here's the language in the local government code, which you did not see in the prior presentation. The developer's portion of the cost may not exceed the amount required for infrastructure improvements that are roughly proportionate to the proposed development.
That, that was on the slide.
What you, what you saw was a distinction, council member, between system roads and uh proper project roads. There's no distinction in the law. None. What the law requires is that the, the, it, there either be an equal sign or that the demand number on the left side of the screen exceeds the right side. That's how simple this is. This is City of Flugerville ordinances that says that the maximum accessible roadway impact fee per ser- service unit for roadway facilities is the approximate and appropriate measure of the impacts generated by the new development. There's nothing in here that says, gee, we didn't like the answer, so we came up with a different formula. That's what has happened here.
Oh, eh wait, 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 can't just say that.
Well, you just heard it.
No, 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 no.
Which is, we, we ran this number.
Okay.
And we came up with six million three. And then we looked at it and said, that's not enough, so we ran the citywide number. The code is clear.
Okay, that's what you, that's what I wanted you to.
Yes, the code is clear. So that's what you get per the code. Six million three. So that's how you fill in the first blank, in my opinion. The second difference is all governmental, all government-required public dedications must be accounted for in determining rough proportionality. So, and then in those final two cases, it's clarified that you take into account all government exactions, not just public, not just roads that you deem to be community roads, all roads. So if it was that easy to get around the Supreme Court and the Texas Supreme Court and the Texas Legislature, it would be easy to say, every road is a project rep. That's not allowed, that's not the law.
What's the clarification that Sheets has brought in this case?
Well, that's, that's in uh looking at that evolution, uh there were questions about whether, are these exactions required to be calculated, and the answer is yes, all exactions. Here's the map I think you may have been looking for. So on the left, it shows all the diagrams. And on the right, that's the total of the exactions, twenty-four million dollars.
Is there some reason you, you included the impact fee along with?
You take, you take.
All the dedicated items?
Yes, sir, you have to take into account everything that is required of you. And it's up to the municipality then to make a decision within the confines of what the impact is on the system. It is up to the, to the municipality to determine how they want that value to be spent, if you will. You can get it in impact fee, you can say, we want it in dedication, or you can say, we want it in construction, or some combination of those, but the total can't exceed the roughly proportionate impact.
Were you including it on this list, have including, have double-counted items?
That's what's being required of us, twenty-four million dollars.
You have double-counted on that list?
No, I haven't.
Would Row, but according to the engineer, Row Lane would be counted as a credit against the roadway impact fee phase one and phase two.
As you said, that's not right now in the, that needs an asterisk.
Okay.
Okay, so if, if you, if you have that credit system, then it should be reflected in the documentation that we've been seeing.
And, and I, I believe it is, it is a shall upon application, because it is in the plan, it shall be credited.
And what you just heard is, it's a pretty mushy system that.
I think you're the one who's making a mushy here.
Well, council member, I am not, I'm trying to make this very simple.
Let, let's keep going through it then, let's, let's, let's clear it up.
It's very fair. So that's the way, in my opinion, that you fill in the two blanks. So as you can see, four X what I think the value of the project's demand is, four X.
Can we go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
So my understanding is that the, the Barkway extension is, is not any longer being required.
Can I address that real quick?
Yes, please.
So there was, by the council member, there was a earlier in the evening, there was a uh insinuation that we were playing two sides against each other, not correct. We asked for Barkway to be eliminated in order to get our preliminary plan approved, and you can't get any permits issued unless you have a approved pre-land. So when we were unable to get Barkway waived, we had to do the fee-in loop. This, the staff came back after the fact and said, okay, we'll consider a cul-de-sack. Terrific, the park's back on the table.
So you're, you're, just, just to be clear, from what I got, from what you're saying, staff said to you that they couldn't consider it until they actually, you submitted what you had.
Yep.
And then after the fact, they went back and they said, yes, okay, now that you submitted this, we can, we can work.
Exactly, terrific.
Okay.
One, one thing is off the table, we're happy to, happy to take that decision.
But, but it goes to, um, cause I hear I'm reading the room, um, I'm hearing some frustration on council about this. It, it, um, I think part of it is that, how does this ultimately operate? Is it a good faith effort? Because some of the things that you brought up, um that was part of, that we talked about should have an asterisk. Well, it seems like staff was saying, eh, from what I understand, is that, hey, listen, yeah, once this happens, this is what we'd work on and work for there. I understand that there's apprehension, cause it's not just, you know, black and white in the, you know, in an agreement or so, but that would be an example of something.
Council members, there's things that go into the credit column that can be calculated, we're happy to take those into account.
And, and that's what, yeah, I mean, I, cause it sounds to me, one, we may wanna look at this again, the system as a whole, we do it here. But two, yeah, there's some, there's some le- some way we can work with.
So we're requesting three things. One is that all landed dedication, all fees, and all costs of required construction for roadway facilities go into the calculation. We think that's the law. Secondly, we think that because of the way that the code reads, there is no question that that's the, that's the city's own version of what the proportionate impact of this project is to the system. And three, to your point, let's eliminate and Barkway and the pedestrian pass-throughs, that can get us closer to an agreement. And that also keeps us consistent with our conversations with the neighborhood, which had been from the beginning, we don't want to do those things.
Can you explain um how eliminating Barkway would eliminate the pedestrian requirements?
They're two different things, but uh we think those are two ways to reduce the twenty-four million dollar cost that are easy to do.
Mr. Drenner, can I ask you to go back to the slide where you calculated the six point three? I wanna make sure I understand where you're coming from with that.
Okay, hang on just a second. So in the code, under maximum accessible roadway impact fee per service unit, that's, that's where you get the dollar amount that once you apply them to the uh two phases, gets you to six million three.
Would, would you, would you agree, though, that that number is the maximum amount of impact fee that's authorized to be um assessed uh through the impact fee statute by state law, but the actual maximum input could be greater than that? Because there's a, because when, when the city councils adopt their impact fees, they are prohibited by state law from adopting the maximum amount?
I guess what I'm looking at, Mr. Zuck, is, is the uh the code language itself, and then uh, you know, when we started this process, there's a roadway impact fee estimate worksheet that uh you've worked through that, and it had the conclusion, roughly proportionate impact of development. That no longer exists on the website. So if, if that doesn't mean what it says, what does it mean?
So, Mr. Wait, wait, one question. Okay, you said that, can, can you say what you just said again?
I'm saying that when we started this process.
When you started the process?
Back in early March.
Oh, so you mean this process?
There was a worksheet.
Okay.
And the conclusion to the worksheet, titled roadway impact fee estimator worksheet, was roughly proportionate impact of development. Is that not exactly what the state law says?
So let me, I don't think I was very, I don't, perhaps I didn't, I wasn't clear in, in my question. So the impact fee statute authorizes the city to adopt a maximum, a maxima- a maximum roadway impact fee.
It requires the city to go through a process to determine what is the, system-wide, city-wide, or service area-wide? Service area-wide, um, of what a developments project impact will have on that service area. State law then says there's a, there's a total, even though if that number is, is, let's say that number is twenty-four thousand. State law then says cities, you can't actually charge the developer that twenty-four thousand. You can only charge them half of that at most. So the actual dollar impact amount might be, um, as much as eighteen or twenty-four thousand. I don't know, I haven't seen the numbers. But, but the reality is the city has adopted an impact fee sufficiently less than that because that's what they're required to do under state law. And so the city's code of ordinances is completely consistent with state law. Because it says this is the maximum accessible roadway impact fee, which is not necessarily the actual cost of the impact of the development on the community. That's all I was asking.
Okay, no, and, and that makes more sense because you're saying specifically, I think it's fair, I mean, because he's saying.
Why does the worksheet say roughly proportionate impact of development?
No, and that's a great question, which we will ask, we will ask staff. That's, that's a great question. But that, you know, that makes sense.
Since that traces what the state law says, that seems to be important, at least to me.
So do we have an agreement about the, the number of vehicle miles that will be, uh, generated by this project? Are, are both the developer and the city in agreement as to what that number is?
Uh, yes, we have a TIA that, uh, has been accepted.
And, and what's that number?
Is it the thirty-nine sixty-four vehicle miles? Sixteen forty-five times two point four one.
Three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four vehicle miles?
Come on, Katie Ogden, who's my colleague.
I'm gonna go to, this is gonna give me to slide twenty.
Go to that twenty.
Mm-hmm.
She said three thousand six.
So there, you can see, um, what's in the code, so the maximum and service unit, uh, service area A. And then you can see from the statute, the way it reads, or from the code, the way that it reads. And you, um, the multiplier is fifteen ninety and it's, uh, you're, it's because of our service unit, we're at two point four one and we get it to three thousand eight hundred thirty-one.
The, I, I, that's not the question I'm, I'm asking.
You're asking.
What is, what is the number of vehicle miles?
And that's the number that you multiply the, the fifteen ninety by? And it sounds like we came to the same numeric conclusion?
No, it would be the units times the vehicle miles per unit to get the total miles. That's the calculation that we.
So we're at three thousand one hundred and nine vehicle miles.
Okay, so then there is.
Because, right, you, you multiply the dwell, or I'm sorry.
Three thousand one hundred and nine?
Um, that's right.
Should be sixteen forty-five times two point four.
That's right.
Three thousand nine hundred fifty-four.
Okay.
It was on the slide, this slide.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to make sure that we, if, if we don't agree about that number, it's gonna be really hard for us to agree about anything else.
No, no, we do agree about that number because, yes, we are, we are, because it is, um, the sixteen forty-five dwelling units. And then we're at the two point four one vehicle mile per dwelling unit and the multiple, you get three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four vehicle miles. That's correct.
Okay, so at least we agree on that number.
Mm, it's the, right, it's the value multiplier that we.
Okay. Which makes sense. So can, well, now there's still, I wanted to ask that.
So forgive me a moment, I'm gonna, I'm pull up, pull up my calculator app because I can't do this math in my head.
I, I, I think that, well, yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know if you want to talk about it. But I think part of the frustration with all this is we were inundated with a variety of different emails.
My, my wings have been closed, so I'm not allowed to talk.
Okay, all right, now I, I, I see where, where the numbers are coming from. And so we're, that, that, uh, in multiplying that number of vehicle miles times the fifteen number, fifteen ninety, which is our ordinance maximum, gets six point three million dollars, which is the number you're coming up with.
So does this.
I just want to make sure I understand where the, the numbers are coming from.
Does the city also agree that that is the roadway impact fee? Cause I'm not seeing it anywhere on there. Now we take the six, the number of units times the service A, or no, no, we take the service A, fifteen ninety times two point four one to get to the six point three million. Does, does our staff agree with that?
That's part of it. Well, I would like my staff to get back up and clarify.
So I, I think if it's helpful, I, I think it were a part on three things. Uh, one is the, obviously the multiplier for these drills. Two, uh, whether or not you include the costs associated with all of the roadways and exactions, or whether you bifurcate those into two categories and you don't count a portion of them. And three, uh, which I think could be resolved is the value of the dedicated land. And whether that's, uh, how, how do you come to a market, a market rate conclusion? Uh, I think that could be resolved.
It, it would be helpful for me if you could provide me some support that it has to be a market value, um, a, a market value analysis. Cause I haven't seen that in law, so it'd be helpful if you could provide that to me.
Well, well, I, I think I can provide, uh, Mr. Zuck, the, uh, the case law that says you've got to look at the value of it. And I think market value would be the only reasonable conclusion.
Uh, I, I think you guys are, are asking and answering different questions.
Okay. Help, help me.
It sounds like he's asked, Charlie is, I'm sorry, Mr. Zuck is asking for, apologize for my occasional informality. Uh, what is the factual basis for what the fair market value calculation is?
Happy to provide that.
Okay, all right, now, uh, I want to make sure that I understand where everybody's coming from. So the fifteen ninety is in the, in the statute, in the code, right? Our, our, our code ordinances, one, what is it?
Is it this one?
One fifty-two, one oh five.
One fifty-two, one oh nine.
Okay, and the calculation the engineer has done was based on an, an actual cost of row lane, which would have been, uh, forty-two ten per vehicle mile, right? But the state requires us to, to calculate it at no more than fifty percent of the actual, is that right, Charlie?
For, for impact fees, that's, that's, but, but we are talking about more than just impact fees in this, in this analysis.
Okay, so there's a.
The city is requiring, and, and I'm sorry to interrupt it.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, the engineering staff and city staff can answer better than I can because they, they have the details better memorized. But my understanding is that we're talking about an impact fee, which apparently everybody agrees on. We're talking about dedication of right-of-way.
Okay.
And the construction of, of some right-of-way. So it's three different things. And those, those are all considered exactions under the law.
Right.
One is the impact fee, and then the others are the things that we're requiring to be dedicated and/or constructed. And they are entitled to certain credits for those things. Um, and, and the engineer can address it better than I can. But it is my understanding that it is possible that the impact fee itself may actually not have to be paid because of some of the other things that we're requiring them to do. And the engineering, the engineers can, uh, talk to that better than I can. Right now, we're all circling around this idea of the impact fee. But we're talking about more than just the impact fee, which is why the dollar amount is, is high.
So it's.
So I disagree with the premise that it can't be more than the impact fee. The law doesn't say that. It says, it says that the impact fee can only be a certain amount of the total impact. But that doesn't mean we can't require other exactions, like dedication of right-of-way or construction of other, of other infrastructure. So long as that total is roughly proportionate to the impact of the development.
Okay, so.
The impact of the development.
Hold on, I want to, I want to make sure I understand all of the pieces that you're putting in the poll. So the exactions are made of three different pieces?
Payment of the, payment of the fee.
The impact fee, the roadway.
Dedication of some right-of-way.
Plus dedication.
And some construction of facilities.
Plus construction.
Correct.
Okay, and that's the total exaction package.
That's the total exaction package.
Okay, and are we agreed on what the amount of the impact fee?
We are.
It would be.
Six point three.
Okay, so that's six point three.
I don't think I'm wrong on that, well, I'll agree to that.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand what the points of disagreement are.
You are correct.
Okay, so the point of disagreement, and Mr. Dern, you tell me if I get this wrong.
You bet.
Um, is can the city also charge the dedication and construction? Or is that, uh, a exaction that is outside of what is allowed under the rough proportionality case law? Is that, is that the, the disagreement?
Sounds to be the disagreement.
But let's, 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 let's hear what you think.
Well, would you do me a favor and go back to the, the list you have of twenty-four million dollars? Maybe forward, wherever it is.
Not play till, yeah, I, I like the way you laid it out. I'd like to hear your response.
So my, my understanding of this is that you're saying we're requiring you to do all these things? And you are only required to do six point three million dollars worth of this. Is, is that your argument?
I, I believe that's consistent with the law.
And i- if you were to do six point three million dollars of this, you wouldn't even complete, uh, you, you wouldn't complete two of these projects? Right, you, you'd eat all that up in Trinity Acres and Peach Vista. And by the time you're done with that, then, then how does the rest of the infrastructure required for this development get built?
I believe that the city has the flexibility within the rough proportionality law to determine how they want that six million three to be spent.
And, and then the city's on the hook for the rest of this infrastructure, according to your argument?
My argument is what I believe the law is, which is cities can't require exactions that exceed the amount of impact on the system. That's exactly what I believe you asked.
I, I asked you how the rest of this necessary infrastructure is going to be funded.
If, if all of that was actually required, then the city would have to fund the difference.
And you're saying that that is not required for this? How did you come up with the, uh, the assessment of what you believe is required for?
That's been the discussion.
That, that's the six point three, you think the six point three million dollars covers the totality of the impact to the infrastructure in the entire region?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's, that's what I need to hear. Thank you.
And, and that's, that's the part, I mean, I hate to say y'all should have just boiled it down to it, but that, that's the discussion point, is that, is that you're saying, hey, listen, no, it's actually, it's only six point three. We all agree on that specific number. The other extractions, as you laid out, those aren't applicable to what we're seeing here. To Doug's point, Doug's saying is that, well, this development is going to cause all sorts of other, that, yeah, yeah, costs that are gonna come with that, how is that gonna be committed with that? Your argument is, is that we understand that, but you have six point three million dollars to figure out what you can spend on each allocation of these things.
And council member, what I have.
Appreciate some consultation with legal counsel.
Council member, what I have, we have repeatedly hoped for, was let's talk about what the law requires.
Okay.
Let's talk about what the law allows. And then it's been my experience, having done this for a while, ever since Nolan came out in eighty-seven, I mean, excuse me, but Nolan came out in eighty-seven, that you sit down and you talk about, well, what makes sense here? But you can't make sense of twenty-four million dollars.
Okay, uh, we're in executive session to get some legal counsel. Okay, uh, we're in executive session to get some legal counsel.
I need a.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back from executive session. No action was taken.
Mayor, would you entertain the possibility of postponing 8A to our next meeting?
Yes, is that in a form of a motion?
Do we need to make it in a form of a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to move postpone 8A to our next meeting on August 26, 2025.
I'll second that motion. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. Moving on to our next item is 8B discussing, consider action to approve a letter of non-objection related to an application of Applied Materials for Foreign Trade Zone designation filed with the U.S. Department of Commerce for site located at 3212 East Pecan Street, Lot 3, Flugerville, Texas 78660. Lot 3 and 4.
Oh, the applicant or Krista, do you want to open us up?
Do we have somebody from Applied Materials?
Yeah, feel free to come present.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Ben Ramirez. I'm the Administrator for Foreign Trade Zone Number 183. The Foreign Trade Zone Program was established by U.S. Congress in 1934 to allow companies to import goods and defer paying import duties or waive them entirely if the goods that are brought into the U.S. are exported out. So this evening, we have Representative Steve from Applied who's here that they're applying for foreign trades designation of that site.
Good, Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for having us. It's no change to our existing operations. We operate a large facility in Austin right off of 290. It's the large buildings with the murals on the side. And then we have two warehouse locations, the two that you see on the screens in front of you. They've been in operation now for...
I'm not seeing anything.
We don't see this one.
Just the lots 3 and 4 that you see.
Right, oh.
These are new over there on the northeast corner of 130 and...
Yes, sir.
And is that a new facility for you then?
Newer, yes, sir. The first building we put into operation about a year and a half, almost 24 months ago, and the second one just came into operation this year. Yes, sir. They're sisters of each other.
How much square footage do you have over there?
Each of those buildings are 170,000 square feet.
So 250, or excuse me, 350 total?
340.
340?
Yes, sir.
I understand in the questions I ask staff that, you know, there obviously is some sort of tax implication and revenue implication that seemed like it was relatively minor to the city. I think in the realm of $13,000 a year. So this seems like a really great way to ensure we're supporting our local businesses and we hope you continue to grow here in Flugerville.
Yes, sir, thank you.
With that, I'd move approval.
Second, second. Have motion and second to approve. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for hanging out with us so late.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
His Yeti's still here.
Yeah, he's still here somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
His iPad is still here.
Is he just in the parking lot?
Okay, 8, moving on to 8C, discussion, consider action to approve resolution amending rules of order and procedures for the City Council meetings.
I'd recommend we postpone this. I don't think it's pressing at the time.
Second, second. Okay, motion and second to postpone.
So there's going to be a long meeting on August 26?
Judge, just to get, there's a state law change that causes to make one of the changes. I guess we can just abide by state law and have the conflict.
Yeah, we have to abide by state law.
So we'll have it in conflict.
Well, I'm assuming does that go into effect September 1st? So we've got another meeting.
Yeah, okay.
We'll pick it up then.
All right.
Or either way, yeah.
Do I need a motion?
You got that Caesar second to that motion, right?
Okay, that's fine.
Make sure he gets credit for that.
I do not know whose I did. Was that Councilmember Reese?
Did we say Mr. Mataria was here or not here? Present, not voting. I don't know that he needs to be back. Well, we do need...
There's requirements for voting under our codes.
He's biologically unavailable at the moment.
Okay, motion carried.
All right.
All right, so we need to go to item, what was it?
We do have item 8D as well.
Yeah. Well, plus our executive session.
Exec and 5L.
Yeah.
5L.
So 8D is the discuss and consider action to approve a resolution to set a proposed maximum 2025 property tax rate supporting the FY '26 budget and schedule the date for the public hearing.
And we're required by state law to do that today.
Well, I believe are we required by state law to have six affirmative votes on that? Or five affirmative votes? Or is that a simple majority?
No, not...
This is setting the maximum.
Yeah, this is the later...
Okay. Okay.
The maximum.
I wasn't sure if we should wait till Rudy returns and handle our other items.
Voter approval rate.
Right. Well, we could propose to go over the voter approval.
He may have left.
No.
No, that's right. He's got his stuff here.
Or we can go do the item that I pulled.
Okay, well, let's do the executive session item.
Can we just do the item I pulled from consent agenda real quick before executive session? I was just, just like a couple minutes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right, what are we doing?
5L.
5L, all right, 5L.
5L, approving a memorandum of understanding between the Austin Police Department, Travis County Sheriff's Office, County and District Prosecutors, Travis County Attorney's Office, Protective Order Division, Travis County Community Justice Services, Adult Probation and Free Trial Services, the Safe Alliance, Travis County Counseling and Education Services, Victim Safety First, Texas Aidos Project, Flugerville Police Department, and other participating law enforcement agencies for participation in the Travis County Domestic Violence High Risk Team, and authorizing the City Manager to execute the same.
Councilmember Rogers, was this your item?
I did not pull this.
Yeah, he pulled nothing today.
I apologize. That's just...
That's it.
I'm doing three things next to... One of the two down there.
No, I pulled it because I wanted to highlight that this is such an important issue to address domestic violence for the safety of our families and our children and our wives and husbands. And so I just wanted to hear a little bit more about it and just have the brief presentation so that the public can know more about it and to know what we're doing to keep our communities safe.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This program, this MOU, allows us to work in a collaboration with other criminal justice entities in Travis County in developing innovative ways to protect our victims and to track our offenders and with the ultimate goal of keeping our victims safe.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really excited about the cross jurisdictional cooperation that we've undertaken.
Yeah, and I hope more cities in the county will participate in the future. So I motion we approve.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and second.
So...
That was the only one. That's what I had.
So you got to keep in mind, this has come about from a...
Motion carried.
Other incidents that happened. That's why. Other people will join in. They'll join in.
Okay, let's jump back to executive session. We have an attorney in the wings waiting. We're, no, we're almost back.
Arbitration carried.
I went to bed at 12:00.
Hey, we're back from executive session. No action was taken.
Which, what number is that?
Okay, Tracy.
Do you have the magical language?
Wait, do we have to do a motion? No, we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For executive session?
No.
No, no, we're talking...
I don't know. Charlie, do you need a motion from that exec?
No, no.
Okay.
We just need Jesus.
Amen.
This is not the one where we need the magic language.
I don't know. I just worked here. Okay.
That is correct. I checked on that.
Okay.
So quickly this evening, and you'd already read the title of this agenda item.
Let's read it in.
Item 8D, discuss and consider action to approve a resolution to set a proposed maximum 2025 property tax rate supporting the FY '26 budget and schedule the date for the public hearing.
Okay.
So just a quick recap. This is a motion, an action that is required by the tax code. The public hearing is to be scheduled September 9. You can adopt a lower rate at that point. You cannot go over whatever you set today. The current tax rate is 5428. The proposed tax rate that we're bringing to you this evening is 5350. And here is how all of the rates were calculated. Voter approval tax rate is the 5350. The voter approval MNO tax rate is 2,500. The debt rate is 2,850.
Motion to approve item 8D as presented.
Second.
This is setting the maximum. It's going to be changed later.
The max, which happens to be lower.
It can be reduced later, I should say.
Yeah, exactly. Max that can be reduced later.
All right, 4-1.
All right, whoa, let's see.
3-2.
Motion carried.
Does that carry, Krista?
I don't know. Okay, motion carried. We're adjourned.